I'm being 6:30.
Yes.
Call the Halifax Planner Board into session. Members present, Macmelius, Talus, uh... Scalanti.
Salty.
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 And Gordon Andrews. Um, on the agenda, we have... Uh, Form A, 650 for River Street. See if I can figure that out.
Yes.
Uh, general discussion for bylaws in minutes. Correspondents, is there a motion to accept the agenda as read?
We have a motion to accept the agenda as read.
And a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, you want to start with some minutes? Uh, Gordon, Mark, and Carlos can do these.
Yeah, we've got just the one we're doing. We never have the right combination of...
It depends on the combination of who actually is here.
That's what I mean.
Most of them have been looked through already, so feel free to...
It's from October.
Is this official?
It's official.
It's official.
It is official. The very one? Do I make it or is Gordon have to?
I make the motion to accept the minutes as entered for October 5th, 2017.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You just signed it, right?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think I'll just copy that, uh, signature page. Okay, we can't do these. Get that view, Mark, and Jonathan. You, Gordon, and Jonathan. I just know we can't do this in a day, because lot is not yet. Guess it's the only what we could do today.
Okay. Knock one at a time, huh? Good, we know the order of time, but no one can catch up.
Yeah.
Um, there should be some prior information in there about zoning bylaws if you want to do a quick discussion before... That's Pope Town that we looked at at the last one.
And did you get anything back from the zoning vote of appeals as far as what they granted? Or whether or not they waived parking? Do you remember there was some discussion whether or not they had it?
Yes, we did look into that. They technically did do a waiver on the parking. However, it wasn't under their jurisdiction.
Comes under here.
It does come under here, but, uh, we did, uh, Rob did look into the bylaws and... It came out that as long as there was additional parking within 300 feet of the primary establishment, that they didn't have to meet the parking requirements in being a town, uh, building. So...
Which project is this?
Across the street at Pope Town.
Okay.
They had a parking requirement of, I think, 57 spaces, but they were providing 38.
So they're taking advantage of the 19 in our parking lot here?
Yes. Um, they are making some adjustments anyway. We have, we didn't approve anything the last time we were here. They're supposed to be adding that lease from walking into cat spot.
Yeah.
But they need to...
I think that that should still be based off the 50 plus.
Right, and that's what we told them. Um, and they were going to make a few adjustments to the walkways and the ramps and stuff like that. So, um, I spoke with John Campbell the other day. He said they weren't ready for tonight, so they're on over the 50 to bring an updated set of plans.
Is this all that there is for site plans right now?
Yes.
But this is the only site plan, right? There's no any nerds damage or...
No, I brought that up too, but this is really just an architectural plan.
Yeah. Okay. And there's no grade or anything?
They're gonna have to do one anyway.
A what?
They're gonna have to do an engineer's plan anyways.
For the site plan itself?
Um... Yeah, sure, great.
I would think so.
Shouldn't stay buried in it. Sorry, are you here for the Form A?
Yes.
Did you guys see, I read an article that they were talking about changing the requirements for zoning bylaw changes. So we need to make it easier to pass them in as far as, um, whatever the majority, they need a supermajority currently. Need a two-thirds. Yeah, they were talking about just like the jury. Yeah. I'm not sure. I read the article and the proposal.
What article is that?
It's...
Wait, where was it?
Uh, I got it off my Google News feed, but...
Through the same?
Yeah.
Who is the zoning bylaw review committee?
I wonder if we have one right now?
We used to have one. Yeah, this was just something about a little other public which had, um, back when.
Okay. Is she sort of the planning board? Who should this be?
You don't have one.
Nobody voted technically to submit this, right?
No, I was just trying to come up with something to get started.
Okay.
So that's really... When there was a review committee, I was actually doing some work for them.
Mm-hmm.
And this is what we had come up with with the bill.
Okay.
So I just kind of let's bring it to the attention of the planning board.
To start the conversation.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's our plan.
This is our plan. You want me to move on to the Form A?
Sure.
Larry?
Yes.
You're welcome to step up too if you want to put a look at the plan.
Yeah, I'm Larry Silver from Silver Engineering Associates. And, uh, I'm here on behalf of, uh, of Hasiotis, folks that basically own this entire tract of land. As you can see in the locus that's here, uh, it's a very lot piece. That's within Halifax, and then the rest of it is in Middleborough. The piece that we're carving out is this piece here, which is called, is being identified as Lot 1 on this plan. Lot 2 is the remaining land. And, uh, this is after having done extensive wetland identification survey and so forth, and then identifying this, uh, this parcel to be conveyed out.
This gentleman's with the airplane stuff?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't usually get people that actually are interested in coming up for my Form As.
Yeah.
Public hearings for other stuff, yes. So you understand where, where this is, what you're talking about, right?
So in relationship to the, the planes, those would be on the...
Uh, right around concrete buildings, uh, basically right there.
Right in the middle of that area.
Okay, so it's actually, you have permission to do it on the lot that they're creating?
Uh, we, we rent it currently.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say to you that although this is being carved out right now, um, activity or changes to what's going on there is probably not going to happen for quite a while. Okay, but they're in process of trying to go through, uh, approvals for both wetlands and for the use that they are going to propose on here. I don't think it's any real mystery, but it, um, they're going to be proposing to put solar on, on this particular parcel as the first phase. There may be another one that comes in behind it with, for a second phase after, and possibly a third phase after. So I would say that as far as your agreement, I don't know how, is it a lead?
I've been in contact with them, and I know that their intention is, is to do this, so I just wanted to kind of be informed on.
Yeah, and as far as, I don't know if you get some agreement as to maybe relocating another...
We've talked about it very briefly.
I, I would say to you that probably if you relocate it to the, to the Middleborough side of that line, it's probably the safest one for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they mentioned as well.
Yeah. But I think there are some decent areas over there for that purpose.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that you could find, um, you know, a location that'll work out for, for all parties. And so we, uh, so basically it's simple as that. It has adequate frontage and area on, on existing roadway, and that's, uh, so we're looking for your endorsement. Uh, as, as you know, Form A is not an approval, it's an endorsement saying that it does not come underneath subdivision control laws, that it's not a subdivision by state statute.
Are you getting a, uh, a read from the Conservation Commission just the lot?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't believe that I will be involved in that process, but I believe that that's their next step is what they will be doing. Um, I'm working for the property owner. The property owner has asked that we delineate the wetlands, locate them in the field, plot them on plans, and then also prepare the, uh, plans for dividing out the property for the potential buyer.
Okay.
So, uh, he's still got some hoops to jump through before we actually would close on the property. I'm probably thinking it's probably six months away or something around by the time he gets to that point.
The area to reach you?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, it's a 700 and, what was it? Well, it's, it's a huge number. Shape factor you're talking about is 302. I had to ask myself that three times too. It's crazy, because you don't usually see numbers like that.
No, but isn't it supposed to be like 35 or 40?
Greater than...
Greater than 30 or it's greater than some number like that?
Great?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is great.
Yeah, I thought the same thing when I saw the 300 usually.
Yeah, well, you know what I did? I ended up doing a fictitious one just to see if I came up with numbers that were kind of crazy like that, you know? And, uh, basically what it's showing is the number being, um, larger just really is showing that it's, it's really, that it's a large property, but it's, it's a regular shape. It's a regular shape. Even though it's a little bit irregular, it's got a lot more area. The area outweighs the changes in the, uh, in the bearings. They look like a lot of changes, but in a scale of how big the property is, um, it really isn't.
It's not far from the straight line.
No, it really isn't.
And none of the jobs are actually that small, and at no point does it narrow the property or anything.
No, not at all, not at all.
What's this, uh, what's this easement here? Is that on the remnant parcel?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's outside of the actual locus, um, at this point here. That's just for access into the land in the back. There, part of it is that there'll be some, some rights that'll be, uh, actually referred to for, for both parties as it relates to that.
I think they want to do the marijuana growing facility next week.
On this part of here?
Uh, I'm not sure exactly if that's where they're talking. Are they talking right there? So I thought there was, there's another phase of, uh, of solar that's supposed to be fairly large too. Actually, two phases that could possi, they're potential. But they want to start with the first one and see how they actually fare with, uh, with it.
So they're going to cut out each parcel as they do each thing?
Um, as they have a buyer for the property, yes.
As you go over this way, is this more wetlands?
Uh, there are, oh, there's lots of wetlands.
Oh, this way?
There's, yes, there are other wetlands in that direction.
These are just the big fields, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. There are, um, I want to say that there was, uh, how many? I can't even tell you how many feet of wetlands we were locating out there. It was crazy trying to locate them all. There's so many different little areas and stuff. But it's funny, you know, they, they look like there's lots of wetlands, but there really is a lot of uplands mixed up in there. As you can see in here, there's still a sizable upland area. And there is a designation in here on FEMA, which they will have to deal with too as far as, because FEMA in this case here is a, uh, is just a Zone A as opposed to, uh, an AE. So there's no elevation associated with it, and so they'll either have to stay out of those areas, which I don't think will be practical in some, some cases, or they're going to have to come up with what the elevation is for that. Uh, in those kind of cases, we typically would go in and survey the areas that are just outside of the Zone A and establish what is the lowest grades, lowest elevations that are outside of it. And then we apply for a Loma to, to FEMA to say that we, we don't have exact base location, but we know that, uh, base elevation, but we know that it's less than this number because you've shown that that's not in a floodplain. And it's actually been a very successful way of dealing with them on these Zone As. We've done it many, many times.
Yeah, rather than the topography for the entire parcel.
Well, we're trying to analyze the 100-year floodplain based on hydrology. It, that's very difficult in these kind of situations. But if, but if FEMA is going to just paint an area and say this is in the A-zone and not provide you why, what's the basis of the A-zone, then you have to basically do the same thing to them. You have to say, "You said this pot is not in it." So that means that at least this elevation isn't in the floodplain. And so that's, so that's what we do. We get them to at least agree that if this is elevation 102, that the flood area is at least less than 102 as far as the elevation. And, um, that works very well when, like, doing it for, like, homeowners and stuff, because then at least we can compare it to their house and make sure that they're higher than those elevations and then get them to grant a Loma.
Okay, is there any other questions? And just as far as, so I can place this on Rue Street, there's a, there's an entrance. Okay. So there's an entrance right in the...
Yeah, we're right across from the Hispratt Street, right here.
Okay, so this is the entrance. That was out back, no? Okay, yeah, I knew there was a road somewhere on, or at least a dirt path.
Yeah. And that was one of the considerations, that they did not want to have that be part of the parcel at this point. They want to make sure that they have access to the remaining land.
Who's going to have access to the remaining land?
The Hasiotis. The Hasiotis still has to have access. If this, they were giving away the only frontage that was viable for access, then that would be a problem in terms of getting to this area here where the concrete structure is or back in this area here. At least in this way here, when you come down in here, there's another pathway that goes across through here so that you get to other areas of the site.
I imagine they'd have to be a conservation group.
Oh, yes, there's a lot of conservation group there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
But they own the property, they don't really need the easement, right?
Um, the easement, um...
Probably would be...
No, it's an easement because there was already an easement in existence in and through there.
Okay.
You, you normally don't deed an easement, you can't deed an easement to yourself, right?
Right. So then that's for some other rights to be...
Well, that's, that has to do the relationship between this owner, the one that's buying this, and that parcel, and, um, there's a couple of the, you know, usus, because remember you got some usus that have been out of you. You've got some tenant farmers, you've got some other kinds of things that have been going on out here for years.
So when you're filing this plan, is the verbiage for the easement and the use and everything going to get recorded when you record any sort of changes or deeds to this process?
Right, in other words, when they actually finalize their, um, they're, they're, they have a purchase and sales, when they finalize that, all that stuff will be, uh, will be identified.
And then all the wellings right now are just based on GAS? Pulling off the S-GAS?
Well, they're based on, um, abattness flagging them and our crews locating them.
Okay.
Uh, we spent countless hours out there. You probably saw us out there, I don't know if you...
Saw your flags?
Yeah.
And I think other, other members saw you, but yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I went out to see the crew one day, thought I'd bring, it was one of the days. I thought I'd bring them something to drink or something, but I couldn't find them. I mean, I couldn't find them, that's how deep in the, in there they were, it was crazy. You, you lose sight, you can lose sight pretty easily. It's a big, big area. Hey, wasn't this one time way back when, didn't they look at this site as a potential for an airport, right? Regional airport?
You want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the...
Endorse?
Or endorse the... Plan of land prepared for BS Hasiotis and Sons being assessors map 117, Lot 1, on the plan dated January 17th, 2018. Aye, seconded.
Motion made to endorse the Form A, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Just the mile hour over here.
Yeah, mile hours right there. And I'll need those to stand.
Just a minute.
Xavier first.
Time place, please, right?
Sir?
Matter of vice?
Okay. You don't have my gun, just a sheet of paper.
Uh...
I can, I can probably...
You can just use the tube.
Uh, no, I don't like, I, because you know why? Because sometimes the elastic will cut in too.
Just a pen, piece of paper?
Yeah, something like that would be great. There's a crater cut in. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And we'll need a copy of the recorded data for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Here we go. Good evening, Matt.
Okay, check it out. You don't keep the nine hours there?
Is there anything else on the agenda for there, or is that a...
That's it.
Two?
Okay, good night.
Should I add London?
Me too.
So do we know how the zoning discussion went at the Silver Engineering meeting?
I do not. It was a lot of back and forth, what should we be doing, what shouldn't we be doing, as far as changes, who wants to write them up. Charlie Seelak was going to be going to council to get some language started and...
Good. And that'd be some back and forth where everybody will have some input on the language at some point?
Yeah, probably.
Good.
Basically looking at the in-law, the law, getting those updated and amended, because a lot of the stuff isn't really relevant now as compared to what was 30, 40 years ago. There's more people doing in-laws.
Well, some of that, wasn't some of that to do with some of the state by, the state laws too that have changed?
Yeah, they haven't actually changed yet, I don't think.
Oh, they didn't?
I don't think, I just know it was in discussion. But a lot of it has to do with the terms of five-year terms and renewals and how that's supposed to really be processed.
Yeah, the concept of having to come back for a reapproval is a little scary. Like the concept of what was discussed here of having to essentially confirm that you're abiding by the original approval maybe?
I can see maybe checking, because the way it's written now is it has to be a family member, so some way to check on that, but I think just the chance of being able to be denied after years of having it approved and living there, I think that's...
Right.
It's a tough thing to ask of people, like, okay, you can do it for a couple of years, but in a few years, you may be asked to move.
Right, and that's part of what we're trying to find out through legal counsel, whether it's even legal to do that.
Yeah, it doesn't sound right.
So basically the term limits are being discussed, whether it should be there or not.
If it's even legal, well, that's an easy question, if it's not legal, then we don't do it, right? Do you think it's odd that you could potentially come back and get your right to do the same thing you've been doing for the past 10, 15 years revoked because of some sort of preference or change in position?
Where they don't want it to become an income-producing apartment and things like that.
There's ways to have oversight and have people inspect it.
I would think so, somebody to see who's living there, especially, I mean, people invest a lot in that whole, so it'd be, I don't know, it'd be tough to tell someone after five years of investing in a home that...
What would you even do then, kick that person out?
Yeah, that's just...
And if it's your in-law and you're not charging, can you really evict somebody from a house if there hasn't really been, yeah, that's a tough argument probably to make at that point.
The John Don's there, if you forgive me, or you can go onto, is it a...
I didn't know they were available online.
Yep, Area 58.
Oh, Area 58?
Area 58, yeah, you can go on YouTube and look at Area 58 and find that particular meeting and fast forward, I guess they, I don't think they quite started at 8:30 like they had planned, but somewhere after 8:30, I think the meeting started at 7:00.
What is that, is that for Halifax news or...
Halifax and Clifton, Area 58 is Halifax and Clifton, so if you go onto their webpage, then you can click on Halifax and then you can click onto the different boards.
So you can actually see out meetings? Because I have never seen one, like every once in a while if I get a second.
Yes, you can, yes, I have watched a couple.
Okay. What is this?
That is basically what you're going to need to do.
So she's saying that there was, I filed last May...
For the, just the signature one, the signature page that you've received the State Ethics Code and the other, the train certificate you have to do every two years. So they're basically saying that you haven't done one for a while and you need to do one. So we want to...
So what is the 2817?
58.
The 5817, yeah, you signed the acknowledgement that you've received the State Ethics on last May, so this May you have to sign again, you have to sign those every year. That little form that I give to guys every year, but every two years you have to actually go on the government website.
Oh, we'll start to go on that stupid thing again, but forget that.
So I'm just seeing if I have that update, you make it anything, so you must be able to do it.
Of course.
Guess you move up the channel. Then I'll start not doing it. He's learning.
That's it.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Uh, second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.